Good evening. If you will, bow your heads and join me in a moment of silent prayer. Amen. This evening Eagle Scout Reed Spivey will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Spivey?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reed, and I understand you have an assistant scoutmaster with you who's kin to you, David Spivey, is that right? We welcome you both and we're glad you're here. Council members, if you have had an opportunity to look at your consent agenda, this is the Murfreesboro City Council, September 29th, 2011. I almost forgot that, don't want to do that. But you have the consent agenda before you. If you've had an opportunity to look through that, are there any questions regarding the consent agenda, or is there a motion that we accepted as presented?
So moved. Second?
Thank you. Motion and second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. We have a number of visitors with us tonight, and we welcome you as we go through these ordinances on second reading at this time. Consider for passage on second reading, an ordinance to rezone an area south of State Route 99, New Salem Highway to Highway Commercial CH District.
Move for passage, second?
Motion and second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage also on second reading, an ordinance to rezone an area north of State Route 99, New Salem Highway to Highway Commercial CH District.
So moved. Second?
Thank you. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Consider for passage on second reading, an ordinance to rezone an area north of State Route 99, New Salem Highway, and east of the Sawyer Green River Trace and Cayson Grove subdivisions to residential multifamily 16, RM 16 District.
So moved.
Second. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading, an ordinance to annex an area southeast of the intersection of Barfield Road and State Route 99, New Salem Highway, and to adopt for the same a plan of services.
Move for passage on second reading. Second?
Motion and second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading, an ordinance to rezone approximately 1.9 acres from single-family residential 15, RS 15 District, and to zone approximately .1 acres at Highway, as Highway Commercial CH District simultaneous with annexation located southeast of the intersection of Barfield Road and State Route 99, New Salem Highway, as Highway Commercial CH District.
So moved. Second?
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. And finally, to consider for passage on second reading, an ordinance amending Chapter 25 and 1/4 signs, Sections 25 and 1/4, 5, 6, and 26, dealing with BZA procedures and tenant signs for end or corner tenants.
Move for passage, second?
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the city engineer and the assistant city attorney with regards to agreements for final asphalt surfacing in certain subdivisions. Mr. Griffith, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, and members of the city council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and to present to you the item that you mentioned, as far as the agreements for final asphalt surfacing in certain subdivision. Just a little history as far as the construction of a subdivision. Typically, a phase of a subdivision will have the final asphalt surface added to the binder, of course. After houses have been constructed on about 80 percent of the lots in the phase, and this usually takes about two to three years after the beginning of construction. Due to the recent significant decline of home sales over the last few years, the final asphalt surfacing of many phases of subdivisions in this area has been delayed by the developers. Staff identified over 20 phases of subdivisions that residents have been lived in for more than four years and where the final asphalt surface has not been placed. The reason why the final asphalt surface is so important to us is it does offer a smooth riding surface to the residents. It prevents them from having to dodge manholes, valve boxes, any utility that might be protruding over the road. And it also acts to seal the roadway, acts as a deterrent for stormwater entering into the sub base. Any road that's had the base exposed for an extended period of time is more susceptible to failure, which includes rutting and potholes. Obviously, with failures in the roadway and the deterioration, that increase our complaints as far as the drivability of the roadway. Due to these problems, staff requested that developers in these more than 20 subdivisions, 20 phases of subdivisions, go ahead and proceed with placing the final asphalt surface, whether or not the subdivisions had reached the final or reached the 75 to 80 percent. For the most part, we were successful with a good portion of them. I've provided you a table before our meeting tonight, which better identifies the subdivisions that are in question. You see, we're up to 24 subdivisions now. We actually added a few more after the initial list was compiled. Four subdivisions, or five subdivisions, we were successful in getting the developer to pave. Two subdivisions, we've actually already called the surety, either a cashier's check or a letter of credit, and the city has paved those subdivisions. There's an additional three subdivisions that we're in the process of calling the letter of credit, and there's three other subdivisions that we expect the developer to pave in the month of October. So we feel pretty good about, if you're looking on your list, on items 10 through 24, with the exception of numbers 13 and 14, which is Kimbrough Woods, Section 1 and 2. Back in April of this year, we called the bond on both of those subdivisions. We've had a little response from the bonding company, but not much. Really, just a request for additional information, and that it's been turned over to another section of their company. A little bit more history, the city typically accepts three types of surety whenever we complete, or when a developer completes a subdivision. That's due whenever the final plat is recorded. The three types of surety is cash. We always accept cash. That's good for us. A letter of credit, we've been very successful with from banks, in getting those called within just a couple of days to up to a week at the very most. And the final is a bond from a bonding company. The housing crash affected bonding companies as much as any one, and especially over the last two to three years, we've had a very difficult time in receiving any proceeds from those calls. We've had some calls on bonds up to two, two and a half years, where we've just seen just limited payments on those. Of the subdivisions that's in question, we feel confident on the items number 10 through 24, with the exception of Kimbrough Woods, as I mentioned, that we'll have those paved before the end of the year. The subdivisions that's in question tonight is items 1 through 9, which are nine different phases of three subdivisions. Essentially, the Berkshire subdivision, the Reserve subdivision, and Savannah Ridge. There are certain phases of those that are getting pretty old and are ready for paving. During this entire time, we've been in contact with the developer of these subdivisions, or the principal developer of these subdivisions, which is Mr. Bob Parks. He does have partners on several of these, and they remain open to communication with staff and have basically stated that they do not have the funds to complete any of these nine phases of the subdivision. Obviously, all of them are part of LLCs or smaller entities that are actually responsible for the developments. In order to complete these subdivisions, staff really thinks we have two options at hand. All of the phases of the developments in question for Mr. Parks and his partners have a bond as a surety. An option is available to the city to require performance or payment from the bonding company for the work that has not been completed. Unfortunately, staff, as I mentioned, continues to struggle with bonding companies on the respect to both performance and payment for unfinished work. As I mentioned, the bonding companies have become very adept at delays. There is a, in going this route, we fear that the, or we're fairly confident that subdivisions won't be paved this, in this paving season, which would go through, usually goes through about the middle of, early to middle of December. So we still have a couple of months. The option that we're, the second option that staff has developed is in an effort to get the work completed in a more timely manner and to provide an additional surety for these nine phases of the subdivision. Staff has developed an agreement which states that the city will complete repairs in the asphalt surface in each development this paving season. A copy, I've attached a copy of the agreement for your review. Just a bullet point outline of the agreement is as follows. The developers must provide assurance from the bonding company that the bond will remain in place, which we have received as of this afternoon from the bonding company. Developers accept the estimated cost breakdown and immediately pay 10 percent of the estimated total for each subdivision pay, each subdivision and its members personally guarantee payment for the total amount owed to the city. We have received the 10 percent payment, or a little over $59,000, from the developer and his partners. And like to note also, the second item on there, we do also have their signed personal guarantee backing the payment for the work. City will complete and invoice developers based on the actual quantities. Developers will pay an additional 20 percent of the estimated total by March 30th of 2012. And then the final thing with the agreement is developers will pay the remaining balance by the end of this fiscal year, or June 29th of 2012. All the performance bond include a provision allowing the city to alter its contract with the developers without such alteration releasing the bonds. This language is highlighted on the bond which is attached to the sample agreement which is attached to this letter. City legal staff asked the bonding company to confirm that they did not and would not claim the right to complete the work, but they have refused to do so. Accordingly, it is possible that if the guarantors do not perform as promised in the proposed amendments to the developers' agreements, the bonding company will raise the city's failure to allow them the opportunity to perform as a defense. This would add another complicating layer to an already difficult task of collecting on a performance bond. Nonetheless, staff feels that gaining the 10 percent payment already received and obtaining the personal guarantees of the developers' principles outweighs the additional risk of possibly collecting on the bonds. The total estimated cost of the repairs and placing the final asphalt for all nine phases of the subdivision is $596,390. As I mentioned, as the condition of proposing this to the council, Mr. Parks and his partners have signed the agreement and the personal guarantee statement, and they've paid the initial 10 percent, or $59,639. Again, the additional 20 percent will be due in March with the final payment in June of 2012. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Have questions now, Mr. Gilli?
Questions and actually more comments than anything, Mayor. Chris, I appreciate all the work that you put into this, and I also can appreciate the difficulty with trying to call the bonds on this, given the status of the bond market and the fact that these roads need their paving. Having said that, though, when I have residents who are directly affected by these streets contacting me and saying, while we need our road paved, this isn't the way to do it, it just, to me exemplifies that this is not the path that we need to be going down with this, that we need to call the bonds instead.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. Griffith?
I just want to kind of, I guess, say some things along what Mr. Gilli just expressed. But I want to ask Chris a question. You say you called the bonds and you're waiting on the funds on 13 and 14, is that right? Is that what you're going to do?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
How long a process do you think this is going to take? I mean, you said you won't get, if you'd called the bonds, it wouldn't be paved in this paving season, but do you have an idea, would it be spring, would it be summer next year, or next fall, or five years? I mean, what's your timeframe?
Obviously, bonding companies would differ from company to company, but our experience has been, as I mentioned, the, another subdivision here in town, we've had a call out for about, well over two years now, and we've received some proceeds from it, just basically 20 percent of it, and that was in order to do some emergency repairs. It got to a point to where we were going to have to close the road down if we didn't step in and do the work. So I would say, to answer your question, I'd say we'd be easily a year out, just given my, the history. The one subdivision that you mentioned, I suspect a call sometime over the winter from their contractor. He'll want to meet me on site, go over the work that's to be done, and then a few months later, either give me a yes or no that they're going to do the work. They don't seem to really get in a hurry over anything.
When were those two called?
Back in April.
In April of this year? Thanks. Excuse me, Vice Mayor.
You're okay. You know, that kind of, you know, I agree with what Mr. Gilli said. My fear is if we set, you know, you see 10 through 24, that we've required them to perform on their subdivisions, and then 1 through 9, we're not requiring them to, or we are requiring them to, but we're requiring a different avenue, if you will. But in the meantime, it leaves the citizens in that neighborhood and us in between a rock and a hard spot. They're city streets, they're going to be our streets. They're our responsibility to pave them after they're turned over, and we do that with every city street in the city of Murfreesboro. We pave them, we use taxpayers' money, that's what we do. You know, and I ain't real comfortable with, you know, would you say they're going to sign a?
A personal guarantee.
You know, if I was going to take anything, I would need some collateral. I would need personal collateral with building lots, homes, or something. I mean, I just, signing a piece of paper is not worth a whole lot a lot of times. But I think we just, I think I agree, but we just need to keep going forward with the practice that we've done in the past, even though I know it may not satisfy some of the residents who actually have to drive those streets, and it's difficult, but we may have to address this in the future if it continues to get worse and this drags out. It's just my opinion.
Other questions or comments?
I have a quick question, Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McFarland.
Mr. Griffith, what, we are where we're, I mean, we are where we are with these subdivisions, but what can we do moving forward in the future? I know we have on our subdivision regulations, if it gets to 80 percent, that the subdivision has to be paved, but what can we do to move, as we move forward in the future, to require that? Would it be, you know, stopping building permits in a subdivision until it's paved, or what can we do so we don't get to this point again?
We can. The, some of the problem with that is a lot of the lots are sold on the outset, and they may be bought in groups by builders. Sometimes, when if you hold up construction, you start, or certainly if you hold up a C of O for a subdivision, you start punishing people that's really not involved with the completion of the subdivision. Now, obviously, the more people we can get on our side to encourage the developer to complete their work is better for us. But we've certainly looked at those options, but you know, the best, really, and this is something that staff has struggled with and with the administration also, on whether or not we should still accept bonds as a surety. You know, all these others that, and really, the big difference, Vice Mayor Bratcher mentioned it, you know, the success that we've had on these other ones, either just through the, you know, the developer standing up and doing what he was expected to do, and we certainly appreciate them. But the biggest difference is that they're either a letter of credit or a, in one instance, a cashier's check.
Can we get to where these bonds or sureties renew, I assume on a yearly basis, that they, is there a way that, you know, because fuel prices in '06 were a lot different than fuel prices are in 2011, so the surety amount that we may have in '06 is not going to cover paving in 2011. Is there a way that we look at that, to revise those every year, whether it be up or down?
Most of the time, the sureties are more than, they're anxious to reduce them. I've not had much success in actually increasing any of the sureties. I think what we're doing now is we're, as a department, we're looking to make sure that not only do we have covered the work that's remaining, but we also have repairs that may be necessary that's covered. You mentioned a good point. Not only does the asphalt go up in cost, but also the roads continue to deteriorate and to get worse, which increases your repair costs. So my estimate, while it may be high now, it may not, you know, next, this time next year, it may be even more than that. So what we do is make a call on the surety, or ask them to do the work, and then whatever's remaining, if the surety's not enough, because there's a ceiling to all these surety amounts that we would build the developer for. So it's going to be a combination, seems like either way, it's either going to be all the developer or some sort of combination of the developer and surety paying. But to answer your question is, and we've done this, is to be very slow to reduce any of our bonds, no matter what type of construction is being completed.
Would, Mr. Vice Mayor, excuse me?
One more.
Yes?
I guess, I hope, I think I heard you say that we're going to start moving away from the bonds and going to the letters of credit. Is that correct?
We'd like to do that. If I'm not mistaken, that would require some work on our legal staff as far as doing.
It will take the legal staff long. It will be the question of the council is willing to do that, and go with saying, and other jurisdictions in the middle of the city have done that, and whether or not we want to direct or authorize staff to get more than 100 percent of the expected cost as of the day the surety is taken, to deal with the fact that there might be more time to make it, a larger amount. So those are all policy choices that the council will make. It would not take long to prepare it, if that's the direction you want us to be right back at you.
And that's a difficult decision, too. It's, one of the first things that we asked Mr. Parks to do was to transfer these from bonds to a letter of credit, or to get a letter of credit for the amount. And he said to us that he didn't have any success with banks, and I fear that most banks will be that way on other developments going forward.
Second part of my question is, when, say, a developer comes up and he develops a subdivision and it has X 300 homes in it, we require him to put the final top and pavement on those streets when it hits 80 percent?
That's ours.
Because of construction traffic made damage to that top layer. Can we not look at that at maybe at different sections when it hits 80 percent of a section? Because a lot of times, sections are get completed, and they're sitting there completed for a year or two, waiting on a back section that's not completed, before they hit the 80 percent of the entire subdivision?
For the most part, that's happening in practice. Most developers, due to financing and to home sales, they're doing quite a bit smaller sections now. So really, in practice, I think what you're mentioning is taking place.
Obviously, I appreciate the remarks. I'm a little bit concerned that we need to pave these streets, and I think the city does have, in effect, the ability to do so. I'd like to suggest that because of the condition of the streets and the winter coming up and the suggestion that there might be more expense involved, that council might consider going back to the developer and asking for 25 percent down and 25 percent in March and the balance in June, perhaps as a way to make us a little more comfortable with the agreement, perhaps even charging whatever the county charges on delinquent taxes as interest on the period of time. And again, the only thing I'm thinking about is our residents. We're going to end up paving the streets one way or the other, whether we get somebody else to do it, or whether we do it and then get compensation back. Obviously, these LLCs could bankrupt, and I don't believe the individuals would be liable. If the LLCs go down, and then that's the way they're structured, then we have no compensation, no question of getting any compensation, other than through the bonding company. So I just wonder if council would consider, again, I think the compensation is important, and I think the fact that we get some interest for the money that we're putting out, but this gives us an ability to go ahead and do those streets now, get them capped and get them... them settled and stabilized. It's just a thought. And the developer may not be able to do it, I mean, they may not wish to do it. I mean, it's adding 15% more at this time and 5% more in March, and the balance is still due in June. And in the event they can't meet those, we at least have got 25% up front, so it's just a thought.
Mayor, you know, that's, I appreciate you throwing out some suggestions and some options, but to me, it's just about setting a precedence and doing something different than we've done for all the other builders and developers on this list. When I see, you know, the others, I think we at least have to, in my opinion, have to try to treat them all the same.
I'm a little concerned about the next list. I think we'll be in the same situation in a year's time, and maybe in two years' time, and again, the LLCs can go bankrupt, and they can just close, and we get nothing, and that's why I'm thinking, in this particular instance, and in fact, to set a precedent for next year, that if the people who are developers and who are on the line will guarantee us personally and not bankrupt those LLCs, then we can see our way clear to going ahead and paving some of those streets, because I don't think this is going to be the end of it.
Well, if we're going to be in the banking business, like I said, I'd vote collateral.
Well, and I heard you say that if you open a bank account, you might be able to get a building lot, so, I mean, obviously, there are a lot of people who are stretched out, and, you know, as much as we'd like to have letters of credit, they by themselves are getting more and more difficult to get, so.
I agree. It's just a bad situation to be in. It's not an easy solution, I don't think there is a clear-cut solution on it.
It's not easy on our streets to...
Right, and our residents of the one are suffering with bad streets presently, so...
I have a quick question, Mayor.
Mr. McFarland.
Mr. Griffith, but these streets have not been deeded over to the city yet, have they? I mean, the water and sewer lines, I'm sure, have probably been accepted, but we don't, these streets, we don't own yet.
They have been dedicated as right-of-way, we've not taken the, I guess, what I would say, the full possession of them, in that any repairs that has to be made, any damages that's done to vehicles through riding on them or anything like that, still the responsibility of the developer. So he has all the responsibilities of it, but it is deeded as city right-of-way.
But we will, I guess the question I'm asking, our inspectors will have to go inspect those streets, and they will have to, you know, I know we dealt with, we had residents calling on Battleground Drive, I guess it was about this time last year, when the extension of Battleground was in really, really bad shape, but it has to meet a certain guideline before we can accept those streets.
Oh, yes, certainly, it does, and our inspectors are the ones that developed the punch list to get us to where we are now. Obviously, we'll look at it again before the surety company moves in, or if we decide to go that route and develop another punch list, because those things change over time, but, and then once all the work has been completed, I would suspect that the, normally, we have a warranty period of three years. I would suspect on these, though, that the funds, since the funds from the surety had been depleted, the streets would be ours at that point.
Any other questions, comments, Mr. Gillie?
I realize the LLCs can go bankrupt, but that doesn't change the fact that the bonding mechanism, does it?
It doesn't, no.
Or ability to try to get the money from the bonding company.
No.
Any other questions or comments regarding this recommendation?
Chris, do you feel like that there's any kind of solutions that you want to go back and talk about, or do you want us to, I mean, do you think you've exhausted all your avenues? Do we need to give you a week or so, or what do you recommend?
We've looked at several different options over the last year or so. We think that this is probably the, one of these two is probably our best mechanism to, whatever we're going to do, just go ahead and get on with it. But certainly, getting back to the mayor's suggestion of a possible interest payment by the developer on the amount of money, that makes the idea probably not as appeasing to some of the other developers. And then also, a more substantial down payment. I'll be honest with you, I was surprised when I got the first down payment, so I don't know how this will go, but certainly, willing to go back to the developer and take any recommendation or any offer that this council would have.
Mayor, if there are other comments, I move we deny the recommendation.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, you have a motion and second. Any other questions or comments? Everyone understand the motion? Please call a roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye, thank you. This time, we'll consider the appointment to fill a vacancy on the Murfreesboro City School Board, and let me begin tonight by thanking those who have applied, and I would like to call your name, and if you are present, ask you to stand and be recognized. I'm not going to give you any time to speak, as each one of you has filled out a questionnaire and a disclosure of interest form, but I would like you to rise and be recognized, and certainly, we thank you and appreciate you for applying to fill this appointment to our city school board. Michael Vular Anderson, are you present? All right, Jared Barrett, Mr. Barrett, thank you very much. Gary Eeks, Mr. Eeks, thank you. Karik Fryerson. All right, Patrick McCarthy. Patrick, nice to see you again. Comus Fay Chip Montgomery Jr., good, thanks very much for being here. Eric Newell, Eric, good to see you. Scott Porterfield, Scott here? Thank you. Bill Shacklet, William A. Bill Shacklet. All right, Collier Smith, thank you. And William H. Butch Vaughn, is Butch here? All right, thank you, and again, I want to thank you for being here, those of you who are here, and tell you how much we do appreciate you applying for this job, it's an important job, and our city, and our schoolchildren, and our parents, and teachers, and staff certainly depend on you and to do the job of being on our city school board. This term would expire at the end of April 2014. And council members, I believe our staff has prepared some ballots, and before we give those ballots out, I'd like to ask if anyone has any comments before I kind of get us to talk about how we want to conduct this election. Any comments at this point, before we discuss how we want to have the election? All right, if not, then what we will have is signed ballots, and we will have a number of ballots until someone receives four votes to take this city school board position. If you would like, since we have such a large number of candidates on the first ballot, I could suggest, if you would like to do so, each of you voting for two, so we can at least get a good representative cross sampling of votes on the first ballot, if you would like to do that. But I propose that to you, and the ballots will have to be signed, there are no secret ballots, and so I make those suggestions to you, and certainly am willing to listen, and you may decide differently if you wish as a council. Anyone, Mr. McFarland?
So Mayor, what, we would vote for, on this first run, vote for two, have it narrowed down from 11 to two, and then vote, okay?
Well, if you had a tie, you would just take the ones with the fewest votes or no votes off of the list, and then second ballot would have those who remained that had the most votes. Questions? Vice Mayor?
Can we just have like a political forum or debate with the candidates?
Yeah, sure, yeah, sure.
No, that's, I think that's a great idea, Mayor, we've got some really good candidates, and I'm really impressed with the 10 that have applied, and I think any one of those 10 would serve a school board, would do us proud on the school board. So obviously, there's only going to be one winner, but I want the rest of them to know that all of them would be, I would be proud to have any of them serve on the school board. But, great, great group.
Mayor, if I might make a suggestion, when we prepared the ballot form, we anticipated that there may be multiple rounds, so you'll see a place on the form that will list a place for your name, you also see a line for round numbers, so you might want to clearly establish which round we're in, so we can keep track, and there not be confusion about that.
And Mayor, I would like to also say the applications were excellent. They were excellent.
And we might make the suggestion that if they're not successful in being appointed, that we do have a city election in April next year, and there's a qualifying date that will be in January, and certainly, we would encourage all of you to place your name on the ballot, if you would like to.
This can't run for council.
Vice Mayor says it can't run for council, yeah, right.
Now, at the end, Mayor, can you explain, as we go through this process, we do like the general election that we do have when we have the election, like Harris, two votes, Bratcher, three, are we going to do that, or?
We'll compile the ballots on the first round, and then look at it and see the total numbers for others, if there are two, or three, or four that seem to have a lot of ballots, we could put those two, or three, or four on the second ballot.
I see.
And vote one time on the second ballot, and then see if anyone reaches four, and then take the lowest ballot getter on the second ballot, and go to three, or two, or whatever works out at that point, until we get to four. Would that be all right? Do you have the ballots?
I thought they were with your stack, Mayor, did you?
Uh-oh.
So I apologize, I'll be right back.
Please.
I can see hanging chads right now.
We don't have commercials on Channel 3, do we?
Yeah, we're from our sponsor.
Yeah, we're from our sponsor, Dew Park Water.
We could talk about our city's bicentennial, I can go on for several minutes regarding the bicentennial. We'll have our kickoff on October the 17th at Civic Plaza, and it will be at, I believe, 11:30 in the morning. We look forward to all of you participating in the kickoff, and then, of course, that weekend, we will, the 22nd starts Cannonsburg's Heritage Days, and we'll have some special events there. And then in November, we hope to have a reenactment of the change of the county seat's name from Cannonsburg to Murfreesboro. If you are interested, you can look on the city's website at murfreesborotien.gov, and all the information for all the events that are planned so far is there. Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Thank you.
So we go, we've got the blank one?
The blank one would be then later, that would be the last ones we would use, would be the blank ones. So if you would take the ballot that has all 10 names on it, please put your name on one sheet, and round one, at the bottom. I'm going to ask each of you to vote for two, and then Ms. Michota, are you prepared to count today? All right, so if you will, vote for two. If you'll fold the ballot and put it on the front, and save the balance of the ballots that you have.
We don't have representatives from Deloitte and Touche?
No, we don't have Deloitte and Touche. Trying to keep the expenses down, we're...
I said, nobody's going to mess with Georgia.
Put it on the front. All right, everyone has voted, if you'll pick those up and then compile those.
She's just going to have them off.
We have Michota on right, as opposed to Deloitte and Touche.
Yeah, that's right. Excellence in financial reporting 13 years in a row.
Exactly.
Yes, Memphis is coming to town against the Blue Raiders, who are only 22.5-point favorites, not that I know anything about what that means.
I don't know if we've mentioned lately, but the middle half is coming up.
Is that right? Is the street going to be paved? Good.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. In training.
2,500 runners this year.
How many?
2,500. Sold out in 30 days.
It's too late for me to get into it.
It's less than 30 days, actually, wasn't a shame.
I know three of us.
Less than 30 days, actually.
I really wanted to run it.
You working on pulling the trigger?
I'm not, I'm already tone deaf from pulling it the first time.
Keep the bullets out, yeah.
Mayor, I'm done.
All right, if you would give us those numbers, please.
Michael Anderson had one vote.
All right.
Jared Barrett had zero votes.
All right.
Gary Eeks had one vote.
All right.
Karik Fryerson had zero votes.
All right.
Patrick McCarthy had one vote.
All right.
Comus Montgomery had zero votes.
All right.
Eric Newell had two votes.
All right.
Scott Porterfield had zero votes.
All right.
Phil Shacklet had four votes.
All right.
Collier Smith had five votes.
All right.
And Butch Vaughn had zero votes.
Zero votes, all right. Council members, you have one who has five votes, one who has four, one who has two, and two individuals that have one vote each.
Three individuals had one vote each.
Three individuals have one vote each. Would you like to go to the three highest vote-getters, which would be 542, or would you like to put all six individuals on a second ballot? Let me suggest we go with 542, then. That would be...
Can we put all five?
Mr. Newell, Mr. Shacklet, and Mr. Smith, or would you like to put all six?
Ms. Smith.
Ms. Smith. Which would you prefer?
All back on?
All six back on, once it receive votes, that what you...
That's fine.
Want to do that?
That's fine.
All right, if you would take another ballot, and you would mark through the names of Mr. Barrett, mark through the name of Mr. Fryerson, mark through the name of Mr. Porterfield, and mark through the name of Mr. Vaughn, we appreciate all of you...
Mayor and Mr. Montgomery.
Offering, and Mr. Montgomery, thank you. That would leave 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6.
So how many?
All right, so you would have Mr. Anderson, Mr. Eeks, Mr. McCarthy, Mr. Newell, Mr. Shacklet, and Ms. Smith would be on the second ballot.
How many are we voting?
One, you will be voting for one.
Reminder to sign and put the round number, please.
Right, so at the bottom, put the round number and your name. If you will vote for one, fold the ballot and put it on the... Nice.
Okay, Mayor, I'm ready.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Wright.
We have one vote for Michael Anderson, we have three votes for Bill Shacklet, and three votes for Collier Smith.
All right. So that's seven votes, everyone has voted. We will have a third round. If you will put round three and your name at the bottom, and the only three on would be, or two on, which would you prefer? Two between Mr. Shacklet and Ms. Smith. Those would be the two in round three. That be all right? All right, if you will vote, then. All right, you get to vote again, round three, if you'll take a blank ballot. And put in the names Shacklet and Smith on one ballot. That will be round four. Put your name at the bottom, vote for one. Only two candidates, Shacklet and Smith, vote for one.
I want a jury trial.
Yes?
By a vote of 4 to 3, the winner is Collier Smith.
All right, Collier Smith is appointed to the city school board. Ms. McGannon, are there any special requirements of Ms. Smith before she is sworn in, and when should she be sworn in?
She should be sworn in at the beginning of the next school board meeting, and the school board has an ethics statement that will require to be filled out, but there's nothing more this council needs to do.
All right, thank you, and congratulations to each of you who have offered yourself. We certainly appreciate your interest and your wanting to serve, and for those of you who have run for election before, and those of you who may run in the future, we thank you for being here tonight and for participating in this. Congratulations again to you, Ms. Smith. All right, council members, those of you who are here for that election are free to stay or free to go, but for the council, we will now consider recommendations of the fire chief with regards to generator installation bids for East Vine Street and Cason Lane Chief Gaines, welcome.
Committee, good evening, Mayor, council. Tonight held before you for your consideration for approval, a request concerning our generators installation at our Vine Street Headquarters Station and our Cason Lane Station 9 Station. In December 21st, 2010, Much Refined Rescue was awarded an assistance and firefighters grant, an AFG grant, for the purchase and installations of two generators, one being a 100-kilowatt generator at our Headquarters Station, and an 80-kilowatt generator at our Station 9 Station. Subsequently, we hired Intec upon council approval to engineer this project, and initially we were told it would be a full week build time for the generators, and then we were advised recently that it could take up to seven weeks build time for the generators to sell, plus installation time. So, it's, it's time-sensitive in nature in that we have a performance period for our grant, which is December 21st through December 20th of this year. So we have a performance period that if we do not complete this project by that performance date, then the funding is revoked. So, what, what I'm asking for tonight is because of probability that there would be no council meeting next week, and the time sensitivity of the project, I'm asking council to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a contract with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder as designated by Intec, and approval of the city attorney. So you have, you do have some assurance, it's not a blank check, you do have some assurance in that the city attorney would review this bid and give approval.
Any questions for Chief Gaines regarding this recommendation?
Mayor, because of the time sensitivity to the bid, and want to make sure that our stations stay fully prepared, I move that we approve this request of the chief.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Yes, sir.
Chief Gaines, do you have one at Florence?
No, sir.
As you know, I'm a proponent to have one with all of them.
Okay. When we did an assessment of our stations, we tried to put it at our two busiest stations, which is the Cason Lane and Headquarters Station, and hopefully, in the future, we can procure some more grants, that we can provide funding, and hopefully get generators on all of our stations.
That's a good thing.
All right, you have a motion, a second, any other questions or comments? Everyone understand the motion? Please call and roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Have any beer permit applications?
No.
Mr. Young?
Chief, you had a very good, successful Saturday. Would you like to inform the council of what your department did this last Saturday?
Yes, sir, I'm very proud to announce that the Much Refined Rescue team had two first places and one fourth, in, uh, first place in the pro, and first place in the paid division of the ultimate tough firefighting challenge at the Tennessee Fire and Coles Academy. So, they're, they're really, really proud of themselves as well as I am of them, but this has been something that they've been shooting for, for about nine years, and they finally got over the top of the mountain, so we're proud of them.
Congratulations, very well done. Let's give them a round of applause. How many team members are there in each one of those categories?
Four.
It's four. General, it's four.
It's four.
Four, and on one of, we had one of our personnel that got injured prior to competing, and so we actually ran the one competition, just three of our personnel.
At some point in the future, we certainly would like to see them in front of the council and recognize them for their accomplishments.
Yes, sir, I'll make that happen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Young, for bringing that up.
Didn't mean to interrupt.
Just because your son's a firefighter.
He just won first place.
All right, are there any, Mr. Young, is...
I have no, I think we should vote, sir.
All right, are there any beer permit applications?
None tonight, Mayor.
All right, what about the bills? You have a list of the statements to be considered for payment, are there any questions regarding those bills to be paid?
I don't know, we pay the bills.
Second. Thank you, a motion and a second to pay the bills, please call and roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, is there any other business from the council or staff to come before the council?
The chief's got one item, Mayor.
All right, Chief Gaines? Or Chief Tooms?
With the, with the mayor's, with the council's approval, we would like to be able to request permission to apply for a State Farm Safe Neighbors Grant, and if approved, we will request grant funds in the amount of $14,500 for the purchase of a 15-foot inflatable boat with motor and trailer to be used for our water rescue team. The grant would be 100% funded by the State Farm, therefore the city would not incur any cost.
All right, any questions, Chief Tooms, regarding this recommendation? Is there a motion?
I move we accept the recommendation.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, motion and a second, thank you, please call and roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Any other business?
Yes.
If not, you're adjourned, thanks.